I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council. Could we please have roll call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Von der Heid.
Present.
Councilmember John Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley. Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Kebrik.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All but one are in attendance, therefore there is a majority for this, there is a forum for this meeting.
Thank you, Kirsten. Would all, take a moment, please, for your own personal reflection. Thank you. And would all that are able, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda tonight is the approval of our minutes. The minutes were sent out. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
A motion from Paul.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Vince.
A second from Vince. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have a department presentation this month is with our new police chief, Chad Dick. Chief, welcome. Been a little busy last weekend or so.
It's been a busy few weeks. The blood moon started it all off. It's always been a saying that, you know, full moon time, but when it comes to blood moon like that one, must really have some gravitational pull because calls were busy. So I'll start off by saying I'll apologize if my voice goes out on me. I don't know if it's what's ever blown around in the air or what, but anyway, it keeps going in and out on me. So, well, good evening, council members. Good evening, colleagues that are here and community members. Honored to be standing here as, as your guys as chief to present to you kind of our 2024 statistics, some of the things that went on in the police department, and then also kind of looking forward 2025, what's going on. 2024 was a busy year at the police department, not only for calls for service, but also for personnel issues. To our knowledge, there's never been another year in the history of the department where the chief has decided to retire and three other officers have left for various reasons. All the while, they were down one person also from the previous year from a retirement that hadn't been filled. So, and for those in the room that aren't familiar, recruiting and retention of law enforcement is at an all-time low. Don't know if that's a political climate, all the rhetoric that's out there, or if it's the availability of all the video that's currently out there that actually shows what law enforcement officers have to endure through the course of their duties. But anyway, it's at an all-time low. This isn't just a Jasper problem, but it's a nationwide problem. So while being down in manpower last year, the police department ran three different hiring processes to try to fill the vacancies. Fortunately, by the end of the year, they were able to get three accepted offers. You know, even though it's, it's a difficult time for recruiting, the police department has not wavered in their standards because we hold a very high standard and what the best for our community. So anyway, by the end of the year, able to get three accepted offers to begin after the turn of the year, and then some to start in the mid of 2025. And I'll talk about these officers in just a minute. The activity for, I'll just hit some of the highlights that remind you that they were down officers during this time. There was almost nineteen, well, there were nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-five calls for service with five hundred and seventy-nine criminal arrests, five hundred and fifty-three vehicle crashes, seven hundred and eighty-four traffic citations, and three thousand three hundred and ten traffic warnings that were issued by the department. And David Berger was promoted to lieutenant and Ben Keneese to sergeant. And then, as I stated earlier, Chief Nathan Schmidt retired at the end of the year. In January, I was honored once again to be sworn in as a new chief of police. And since then, we have sworn in three of those officers. And then in the middle of the year, we will bring on the other two, which will bring us up to a total of twenty-six sworn personnel. The three new officers that have already been sworn in are Joshua Pretty, Alec Wallace, and Derek Sutton. Officer Pretty is currently at the Southwest Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and will graduate on May 23rd. He will then enter his field training, part of his training. Alec Wallace was, fortunately for us, was already a certified Indiana police officer, so he didn't have to go to the academy. We put him through a modified field training process, and he is now out patrolling on his own. And then Derek Sutton. Derek comes to us from Owensboro, Kentucky. He was a certified police officer there for the city of Owensboro. And since he was a certified Kentucky police officer, he does not have to go through a law enforcement academy in Indiana, but he did have to go through what we call waiver process, which is additional training through the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy on Indiana laws and procedures. He has successfully completed that and is now in his FTO process, learning how, learning the city of Jasper and how the Jasper Police Department does things. The other two that are coming on around June, the conditional offers have been sent and been accepted. Both of these guys will have to go through the Southwest Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, which will begin in July. We just closed a part-time dispatcher process last Friday. For those of you who don't know, our part-time dispatchers assist our full-time dispatchers in filling gaps in schedule coverage and filling the second dispatch seat during peak times. We received several applications and will be moving forward with that process here very soon. Last week, we opened up a traffic auxiliary process. If you're not familiar with the traffic auxiliary, these are the part-time employees that are at all the major events, at the high school, at church picnics, the ones directing traffic. If anybody was on Newton Street today with the open house, they were the ones out there directing traffic at that. They are very dedicated people. They're out there in good weather, bad, ensuring that the safety of public gets in and out at whatever the venue is. And so we look forward to bringing those on. Our officers, dispatchers, and auxiliary continue to work very hard for the citizens of Jasper. Since 2020, there's been, looking at the numbers over the last few days, preparing for this, there's been a constant increase in the number of calls for service. In 2020, they were right at thirteen thousand, and as I just mentioned, there were over nineteen thousand last year. So six thousand more calls for service with the same number of officers. So the workload has increased. Already this year, we've had several high-profile cases. We've had severe weather just this past weekend and some other agency assists that take a lot of manpower and time. Just a recent example, like I said, were the storms on Saturday. You know, from four o'clock till noon, JP Dispatch Center took a hundred and sixty-five calls that resulted in seventy-two calls for services that officers went to. That was just in that four to, four to noon hour was kind of the high, high time for the storm. I was out there during all that, and it was very neat to hear the enthusiasm of the officers, the dispatchers, guys signing on, advising they have chainsaw, they brought their own personal chainsaw to help clear limbs. Others had brought straps because the stoplights and the wind had spun, so they're able, you know, they were able to get straps up and spin the stoplights back into the proper direction. So once again, not just doing law enforcement activities, but they're true servants of our community. So I've been asked what my priorities are as the new chief, and I could tell you that the number one priority is the men and women that serve at our police department. I want them to be able to thrive both at their service with the police department, but obviously be on that because there is a life outside of being a police officer. Our officers, I believe, are our number one assets, and without healthy officers, we do not have an effective or proficient police department. You know, as I said, beyond this uniform and this badge is a human being, just like the rest of everybody in this room, with feelings, families, and daily struggles. On top of all those facts, there are studies that show that the average law enforcement officer is exposed to hundreds of critical incidents over the course of their career compared to just a handful or less that the average citizen is exposed to. One proven way to ensure that the personnel's wellness and resilience and is a good first line of defense is to have peers that are trained to help effective officers cope with these situations. Therefore, we have begun forming a peer support team. This team will be a group of trained officers that will be helping our officers, our dispatchers, and our retirees with their mental and physical well-being and resilience. I'd like to thank the mayor, I'd like to thank Cale for supporting this initiative. Also like to thank Sergeant Greg Bresser, who has volunteered to lead this team, School Resource Officer Jason Keneese, Patrolman Elijah Mooney, Telecommunications Officer Megan Dodd, and retiree Mike Stallman for stepping up to take on these additional responsibilities. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Joni Stroud Martin. He was a mental health therapist and with the Personal Counseling Services Incorporated and the Clarksville Police Department's peer support team for their willingness to share and mentor us through this team-building process. My prayers are that this access and these trainings, this access to mental health professionals and the training that these officers will get will ensure that the members of the Jasper Police Department are the best they can be to serve our community to their full potential. I've been asked what else is important to me, and as I told the department, when I had the department meeting, I said, let's consider it, I'll use the acronym PATH as a path forward. And so the P stands for professionalism. I believe professionalism helps us not only be better police officers, but a better community. So I told the guys, we need to be professional not only in our presence, but in our words and our actions, that we need to strive to be the best that we can be. The A is accountability in everything that we do. As Proverbs 27:17 says, "As iron sharpens iron, so one person sharpens another." And I firmly believe that if we hold each other accountable in our actions, we will make each other better people, thus making our community a safer and better place. The T is for transparency. Transparency builds cooperation and collaboration, but most importantly, it builds trust, not only within, inside the agency, but also with our community. The H stands for honesty. Being honest with ourselves and our community builds a strong bond and better understanding of each other's views, needs, and requirements. Our current department's mission statement states that the members of the Jasper Police Department are committed to providing a professional and dedicated law enforcement agency sworn to enhance the quality of life to its citizens and visitors. We will always strive to be ethical, courteous, and respectful to all whom we encounter. This is the current mission of the Jasper Police Department, and we will live it out to make Jasper and its community safe for all. So how do we accomplish all this? Well, it's by, through training, but it's also through being true community policing officers, and it's by being community-oriented. So I've encouraged the guys to get in the community, to get out of their cars, and to meet with the local community members. This empowers not only the officers, but it also empowers the citizens to meet with them and get to know each other on a personalized level. I encourage the citizens to talk with the officers when they see them out, and again, we are here to serve you and support you as a community. So in summary, our police department is dedicated and has been for a long time. I've, I've not been with the police department long, but I have worked with the police department since 1997, and the Jasper Police Department is one of the best. And our police department is dedicated to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. Once again, we are very, very fortunate to have the dedicated men and women and the well-trained men and women that we do at the police department, and we need to make sure that we never take them for granted. We invite the collaboration with the city council members and the residents to continue moving forward our initiatives of making Jasper one of the greatest places, not only in the state of Indiana, but the nation. So I thank you. I look forward to working with each one of you.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody have any questions for Chief while he's here? Might follow up at a later time, but it was nice to hear your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Sheriff. Definitely a feel-good moment, listen to what was said there. Okay, next thing on the agenda is our abatement compliance. We have four companies.
We have two companies. Each year, any company that has an abatement is required to file a compliance with Statement of Benefits Form prior to May 1st. Tonight, we have Indiana Furniture here to present and Park Place.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Lori Clem with Indiana Furniture, been there about a year now. Does everyone have a packet or does anyone need copies? There should be two papers. We've got two abates. Okay. So want to thank you guys, start off by thanking you guys for, these abatements have really helped us, and we'll kind of talk about it at the end, that's really helped us grow and succeed as a company. This year is one of our highest-selling years, and we expect to hopefully next year surpass that as well, too. So without these abatements, we wouldn't be able to meet those sales goals with our new manufacturing facility and whatnot. So just want to start off by thanking you for that. We'll start with the first one. So the first abatement is from 2011. The only thing left on that is the personal property, and we're coming, this will be the last year for that as well, too. But what this was for was thirty thousand square foot addition to our plywood facility. We added manufacturing equipment there. It allowed for job growth, additional sales revenue. So this happened in 2011, and we finished the project in 2015. It allowed for better storage and cutting for our stock sheets, better veneer flow for our wood case goods, edge banding, and CNC machines as well, too. So when we first initially proposed this project, we expected to spend about eleven point two million. In total, we've spent six point four million. Really, the main difference is in the manufacturing equipment. We didn't have to spend as much when we got into the details of it as we thought we would. So that's really the difference there. However, we are continuing to invest in our plywood facility, so even though the abatement, the personal property is kind of running up against time here, we still continue to invest in our plywood facility and continue to increase automation as much as possible. We're actually got quite a big project on the water, or over in Italy right now, that's going to be on the water, going to be over to us here in about a year or so. But this year alone, we invested about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in our plywood facility again. And you can see in, in the prior years as well, too, we continue to invest in that facility to make sure we have adequate equipment, we're doing the best things for the business, and we're continuously improving. And then, like I said, in about 2026 timeframe, we'll have a new machine in there as well, too, that's quite a big investment, that'll save us some labor and time as well, too. Employment-wise, so at the beginning of this project, we had two hundred and eighty-seven people on, on the roster. At the end of December 2024, we have three hundred and sixteen people versus, and three hundred and forty-seven, or we had three hundred and forty-seven people in 2023. Reason for the dip is we had about twenty-three open positions at the end of 2024. So we're continuing to grow, we're continuing to need and employ those people. We projected new jobs for this abatement to be at seven. We had six there. We're still continuing to grow our facility in total, but in the plywood area, we didn't need as many as we thought we would. But in total, in our assembly line and in our seating area, we've been able to grow there as well, too. We projected our salary about fifty-four thousand dollars per person there. Currently, in the plywood area, new salary is about sixty-four thousand for last year, which is about nineteen dollars and three cents on average. We're continuing to invest in our employees. They're, they're what make the business run, right? So if we don't pay them well, and, you know, you risk turnover, you risk people not wanting to be there, they're the reason we're there. So we continue to have annual wage increases. We took our last one in September, which was about four percent, and we'll continue to do the same each year. So weighted average about four percent for a production employee. So overall, for the 2020, or 2011 abatement, you know, this one, real property is done, personal property is on its last leg here, but the abatement really helped us get through being able to just, you know, to invest in our facilities and our projects. So it helped us get through COVID, it helped, helped us do what we want to do to grow as a company and help the community as well, too. So that is the 2011 abatement. Any questions?
Go ahead, vote on this one first.
Laura, you said, average wage on, you said average wage was sixty-four thousand. Is that on the summary sheet?
Yes, it is, and about three quarters of the way down.
I was seeing sixty thousand. Did I have the wrong page?
Newer one out, we got February 8th of 2024.
So sixty-four thousand is here. I can give you, I have copies if you want.
So what you're saying is it's even gooder than I thought.
Yes, that's the takeaway. Do you want copies? I have copies if you guys want.
Please have them, please.
Okay, I think I have enough.
Yeah, I'm trying to match the numbers up to a little bit.
While I was reading the copy that she had given us before, and I was going to make a motion to find them in substantial compliance with the number that was four thousand dollars less than yours, so I'm absolutely going to find it now for you. So again, we appreciate your, your commitment to the community and your expansion and all the efforts you guys are putting forth as well. So I will make a motion before the mayor and council tonight to find Indiana Furniture in substantial compliance for the tax abatement form, CF1.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Paul and a second from Nancy. Any further discussion on this?
Back in 2011, I mean, nobody was talking about inflation in 2011. So to see what's happened to inflation over that course of time, we, we're all talking about it now, to have overshot the wage on, on this, and I'm thrilled to see these kind of numbers, and I applaud you. That's, this is what, this is what our community needs.
Thank you.
In the comments, we have, we have a motion and a second right now for the, for this 2011 abatement. All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. So we'll move to the 2021 abatement. So this was for, it's got real and personal. It was for a hundred and sixty-five thousand square foot addition to our manufacturing and shipping expansion, so we called the FLA site. So we were able to add warehouse and shipping there. As our business continues to grow, we wanted to bring all of that onto one location, and so now we are out of Mill Street completely, and we needed to add on to be able to get all of our operations into one location. So we centralized our manufacturing operations, improved our finishing and machinery capabilities while increasing our automation and making definitely safety and environmental improvements to the working conditions there. It's a very nice building. If you ever want to come visit us, we'd be happy to give you a tour. This started in 2021. We projected a total spend of seventeen point eight million, million. As of the end of 2024, we've spent seventeen million. Of that, thirteen point eight is real property and three point three million is manufacturing equipment. So we are done spending on the real property. We're not adding anymore, doing anything there, and we just hit our limit on the manufacturing equipment as well this year. We still had some manufacturing pieces we were putting in. At the beginning of this abatement, we had two hundred and seventy-five employees. That was of May 2021. As we mentioned on the other abatement, we had three hundred and sixteen employees at the end of 2024. We had projected five new jobs because of this abatement. We are at forty-one, so I'm not going to say we sandbagged, but we did, we got forty-one jobs, so we'll take it. So projected wages for the plant overall, so this is a little bit different than the wages from the plywood. This is for the assembly facility. We are at an actual average wage for all production stations of eighteen ninety-three this year versus last year, it was eighteen twenty-four. So certain positions and experiences, or certain positions and experience levels pay much more. So one thing we're seeing is a decrease from last year's average due to a hundred and two new hires. So you've got a lot of new hires, which brings your average wage slightly down, but still continuing, everyone's getting the same four percent wage increase across the board. So no concerns with pay there, and I think everyone's very appreciative of that as well, too. So overall, this one kept a pretty high level, but overall, this is really, the abatement helped us. Without the abatement, we honestly wouldn't have been able to consolidate our facilities and wouldn't have been able to make the numbers work from a centralization of our manufacturing facility standpoint. So we just want to thank you all for the abatement and the opportunity. Any questions on overall business or anything I can help answer on the abatements or just general updates?
How many open positions have you guys got currently at the facility?
Currently, we have twenty open. So our current, as of this week, we've got three hundred and twenty-six on payroll with twenty open positions.
So to achieve MERS, you must run about every Saturday, though?
We have been running every Saturday right now, just we, with the snow and everything, too, we kind of got behind schedule, but yes, and with demand, we're running about, we've been running about every Saturday. They should be getting some relief here soon. And you know, some people like it, some people don't. It's the never-ending game, right? You're not going to please everybody, but you try to limit it. We, we find about forty-five hours is about a sweet spot for overtime.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to find Indiana Furniture Industries for Form CF1 Real Property in substantial compliance.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Chad on the substantial compliance. Is there any further discussion? It's a good overview.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next would be Park Place. And we'll do those individually as well. Thank you. And thank you for your investment in Jasper.
Good evening. Ruger Kirstens here with Park Place Estates 1 LLC. I submitted in the packets for Phase 1, 2, and 3. So I'll just start with Phase 1, be it that to my records, and I tried to confirm it, but I believe that this is the last year for Phase 1, if my math and everything was right on.
Yes, you are correct. This is year five of five on Phase 1.
So Phase 1, just give an update on that. It's fully leased. It has been since it was built. It's, Park Place is one of our favorite communities, given the location to it, and the rent prices are very fair for the newer units. But one thing I'll point out on the, now that this is falling off, you will see that the assessed value now on the parcel that Phase 1 sits on, it's a little tricky because Park Place is scattered across two taxing parcels, so it gets a little complicated when trying to find the true values to put on these reports. But what I found on there was almost three point one million. So that will be three point one million dollars that will be fully added to the tax base. This year, it's at a twenty-five percent, so it's almost all the way there, but it'll be fully there next year. So, and Phase 1 was thirty units. So for the, it's been a while since that project was started, but, so that is Phase 1. Phase 2, same location. This one got spread across two parcels. It was half on one and half on the other, and that consisted of forty-four apartments, consistent with Phase 1. Those are also fully occupied at the moment, and I believe that I have a couple of years left on Phase 2. So I will be back presenting on Phase 2. And I did not touch on anything with the employees on Phase 1 and 2 because, to be honest, I, I didn't know that I was able to do that on a real property abatement, but every project that we complete, we do add employees, so that's where on Phase 3. I do have noted on there, that's the only difference between the two, but Phase 3 is still under construction. We will be wrapping up beginning of May, so it's quickly approaching, and that consists of twenty-eight units in Phase 3. And there, I, we are, have already hired one new bilingual staff member at our office. That's a That's assisting our other bilingual staff member, um, to give a better, um, service to our tenants. But beyond that, um, uh, we've also hired two other, uh, maintenance technicians this year. While they're not all particularly put on Park Place solely, um, they are working at Park Place frequently. Therefore, I only included the, uh, one position, but I wanted to point out that we have been able to bring on, uh, more team members through the years. But, um, I have the, uh, projected cost of Park Place, um, phase three on there, but be it that the project is still under construction, there's no assessed value, um, on those improvements yet. So I don't have anything to report on, uh, the value of phase three. But good news to report on phase three, um, when we start hanging drywall, we begin the pre-leasing process and out of the twenty-eight units, we have five available to go. So, and I don't, I don't know if Heidi leased anymore today. Well, I asked her this morning at eight o'clock and there might have been a few more. I don't know, but, um, so that's great.
So not all these units are complete at this point in time? And you've got all of them rented except for five?
Correct.
Sounds pretty good.
We're bringing our two bedrooms in, uh, starting in the eight hundreds, brand new two-bedroom apartments. So that's an incredible price for our residents here in Jasper.
And then when would you expect those people could move in?
That depends on the asphalt plant and I got on their schedule and, uh, we're telling residents probably the second week of May. Yeah, so.
So they're like pre-rented?
Correct.
Or have their name in the hat or whatever?
We give them a tentative, we give them as close of a date as we can, but ask for grace plus or minus a week. So, yeah.
Ruger, when you said a two-bedroom, uh, apartment in the range of eight hundred a month, uh, how many square feet is that?
Uh, those are right around nine hundred square feet. Yeah. So we're coming in less than a dollar a square foot on rent.
I, I was, it was astounded to be hearing what, what other rents are right now, um, here, here in Jasper and it's, it's, uh, I'm a free market guy. Something's gotta be done and I think, I think it's on the supply side. I mean,
That is.
It's outrageous really for not what you're charging. Those are good numbers compared to what I'm hearing out there.
Um, and that's the reason we're able to do, so first and foremost is the participation with forms as, you know, through tax abatements and things that they really do help. Because without these, we, we would not be able to charge those. But whenever I come in here and present, I always say, you know, I'm going to charge, um, the best price that I can do for our residents here in Jasper and the communities that we serve. And, uh, to combat that issue of what I believe is people taking advantage of pricing on certain rental units. Cause I know that there's a lot of stuff built in the seventies that they're trying to get over a thousand dollars a month in rent. I think that's quite ridiculous. So being in the business, I'm sure my friends will call me and tell me, why did I say that? But our mission is to provide a quality place to live at an affordable price.
Louder for those in the back, please.
Right. We live, we live by our mission and, you know, I want to be around for a hundred years to come and to do so, you have to deal honestly like this. So that's our mission.
Ruger, our, uh, Park Place one, two, and three, all very just similar buildings.
Yeah.
Just some have more apartments than others.
Yeah, the way, um, they're kind of divided up in different units per the phase, just the way that the infrastructure was laid out. Like the last, we have phase four, based on the lease-up on this one coming up, um, pretty soon, I, I say, I think so anyways, and that one will consist of, uh, gosh, I think it's, uh, fifty-six more units. And then Park Place is done. No more Park Place. So hopefully, uh, we will be talking about another project here after Park Place phase four. So.
That last building is quite a bit bigger then.
Uh, there would be, uh, yeah, we only did four buildings in phase three and that was because, um, on phase four, we will have to dig into, uh, the hillside like we did on phase one, if you've been back there. And, um, if we would have built, um, forty-four units and built four buildings in the middle, we wouldn't have had any room to store our dirt while they were hauling it off. So we had to halt construction on two buildings, uh, so that we can excavate that out, haul, load off. So phase three smaller, phase four larger. But they, at the end of the day, the, um, the total unit count of the project will remain consistent, just not ideal in the way that it was split on the unit delivery.
I think it's, this project is, is a great project because it was an underutilized city park that was decommissioned and put on the market and then converted into housing right there in the, the heart of the city. So this is a great project for, for the city in long term. Really impressed by the numbers and your investment there. Any, any questions? Can I do all these in lump or can, do I need to do them all separate?
Well.
We should do them separately. All right. So let's start with Park Place one.
So Ruger, looking at your report here on this, seeing a hundred percent occupancy, again, finishing off the first one, I will go ahead and find your compliance for your CF one, uh, in substantial compliance for the phase one.
Okay, I have a motion from Paul.
Second.
We got John over here for a second. Any further discussion on phase one? All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Park Place, phase two.
I'll move it there. Substantial compliance on Park Place two.
Okay, I have a motion from John.
I'll say it.
Got a second from down in the end there. So it's, uh, if there's any further discussion, all in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion, uh, for our Park Place three to be in substantial compliance.
Motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. Any further discussion? All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ruger, thank you and really appreciate your investment.
Thank you.
Phil, I captured your name. I didn't just put the guy on the end, so. Let's go. Next would be ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash five. And this ordinance is for one reading only? Is, it can be considered for one reading only? Do I have a motion to consider it?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we read ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five for one reading only.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
A second from Chad. Any further discussion? All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
Make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy to read by title only.
I'll say it.
I have a second, Phil. All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With the city attorney, please read ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash five by title only.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash five, an ordinance to rezone certain property within the jurisdictional limits of the Jasper Advisory Plan Commission.
Did I have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash five?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
Second from John. Further discussion?
We, we had the plan commission meeting the first Wednesday of the month this year, this week, or this month, and, uh, had two items on that. This was the first one of the two items we had up that night, uh, on their property that's, it remains in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, uh, thirty-sixth street, uh, in there. Uh, property owner's David Lisa Sang and, uh, one have their daughter, I think is buying a lot from them, wants to come back and build on the family farm. And so they are putting in a private land. These guys will come up and give you a little demonstration, but they, they, uh, came in for us on there. Everything met compliance where it was going to. They put in a private drive, uh, have the public utility and drainage easements in there and left room for further expansion to the west if it ever, um, ever happens that way. So I believe David Lisa are gonna maintain control of the property, which will continue to be farmed at this point until their daughter and son-in-law, thank you, Bill, come back in and, and build a home, uh, on there. Got on the map here if they're gonna come up and give you something. The yellow outlined area is where David Lisa are now, inside of the red square. The green box is what we're rezoning back into six lots, um, on there. So future, future growth and development.
So the thirty-five acres, is that the green box or red?
Thirty-five acres, I think is the whole box.
Okay.
The red box and then the green box would be the, would be the, uh, area they're gonna plow out if you flip through to the second, the third page. Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder. It's went through it already, but it was, was great if you guys wanted to come up.
Do you want to speak to it at all?
Oh, that was a great summary. I'm Mike Reddell, Mr. Mayor, I remember the council, I'm pleased to stand before you. David Lisa Sang engaged myself to do some land, use planning for their family and we put close to the Rosemont lands for them. And just, uh, primarily you're touching the question of zoning, just to give you a very quick overview of what they have in mind, uh, to show you a couple of, couple of spots. There's the property as it relates to the, to the city of Jasper, uh, north and west. And then, uh, basically on two thirty-one, the corner where the banks are, Topoville, German America, and Little Nashville, coming across, past the, uh, the school turn off to the north and then continuing west, uh, the road goes down to Bush Gathers and then, uh, you can see the green property. If you continue on that street or on that county road, it takes you to the, to the backside of Iowa, past St. Mary, Mary Church. So that's the property in mind. In nineteen, uh, in nineteen ninety-five, David Lisa bought this entire parcel with the intention to, uh, raise their, to build a family property. And they built and they had three young girls at the time, um, and they built a path through the woods and, and this. The land was zone, A one, agricultural one at the time, and that was just maintained at that point in time. They moved down in December of nineteen ninety-six. They built a stately federal-style home, um, property. And then, um, David Lisa are both, um, members of families of Dubois County. Lisa was from, uh, Ireland, Flytumob family. She was a career teacher of the Jasper Middle School, both when it was a middle high school and then out to the new building. And then Dave and his brothers, uh, run Forest Products, which for eighty-five years has been, uh, manufacturing wood components, uh, for the industry. So, uh, he and his brothers maintain that business to this day. So, um, as Paul mentioned, uh, one of the daughters, the oldest daughter and her husband, Ryan Elizabeth Betts, came to their parents and said, hey, is there a possibility we could get, uh, a spot that we might build on the property? And David Lisa were very happy to. What I've said is to me, that's the victory, isn't it, being close by? So, uh, working on that issue of victory, then they, they got involved with us to, to start to plan how this request might unfold for what the other girls might be doing through time and what other members of the family. So, uh, from this request, we went into a planning mode and came to the conclusion of extending this six lot, uh, real estate area. So that, uh, you can see lot one, one, three, four, Elizabeth and Ryan. And then the other family members, David Lisa will hold, uh, as Paul had mentioned, the deeds for lots two, three, four, five, and six. And then through time, as members of the family, uh, have, have requested or desire to expand in the, in the lot. The, the anticipation is that as things unfold, the acreage right off of the county road to the north there, uh, would also be developed, uh, woodland in the farming sites. That's kind of the master plan of the proposal. At that point, we went into unified development ordinance and worked out all the details, um, for this rectangle spot. And again, all the right away setbacks, he's got some utility drainage to hold, you know? And included in that, uh, our septic, individual septic systems, and we, uh, secured, uh, soils engineer from Corden, Indiana, Archie came out. And we dug holes, uh, according to code, uh, on the location for all, for all six of the sites. And then, uh, Dubois, Corden, with the Dubois County, County Health Department, Megan Bird was the site of the project. And she authorized and documented, uh, approval of all of these, uh, septic systems. Then back to specifically the question of what you all are looking at here. All the properties, uh, that have asterisks on them were converted from agricultural one, which was this whole region initially. And all of the asterisk places have been rezoned to rural residential. So with this movement to stay in concert with what everything else is going on, as this is converting from pure agriculture land through time, this will do nothing but continue to move toward residential. But the sayings have asked, and we propose to the plan commission, if it's before you, to rezon all of their property, uh, to rural residential. So that, uh, that, all that's got the logistics of where we are there. And finally, um, the Rosemary, as I mentioned, Phil, Beaker has been intimately involved with all the counties of, of this entire documentation. So that's, that's what the Sang family is trying to look out for.
I have a question. All those homes that have asterisks on them, do they all have septic systems or what do they use?
They would, yes. There's, I don't think there's any sanitary down there yet.
I do know that there is, there is.
And for perspective, how, uh, how big are those lots individually?
They all meet the, they all surpass sixty-six thousand. They range from the smallest one to seventy thousand, seventy thousand seven hundred, the largest one is eighty-three thousand. The ordinance for rural residential required with the minimum is sixty-six thousand. So they're running, uh, they're running.
Four point six acres.
Seven, seven, twelve.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
It's on that.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, they're hand-drawn, okay.
So we had, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This might be a question for you. I, what, going from, uh, agricultural general to rural resident, what, what do you gain by that? I don't know enough about the, the two types of zoning.
It will allow them to come back in and, and, uh, build the, build the homes and put the infrastructure in, uh, as it is in a tight area without necessarily having to replat the entire.
So if it was agricultural general, they would not be able to do that?
They would. If it was agriculture general, I believe we allow one special exception on the farm, correct?
Gosh, I can't remember.
And Josh may speak to that, but I believe we have one house on the farm and if we, if we're in A one agriculture, we'll allow one additional residential structure as a special exception.
Yeah, and that's probably a little bit more than meets the, that made me question. Truthfully, they didn't even need to do this or, or to rezone to accomplish what they were doing. Several conversations and coordination with what they were doing and seeing what the general area had already been and has, has been converted to R R, to R R, uh, in one of the last iterations of our land use. It made sense for us to go ahead and ask them to rezone and then to ask you to rezone to R R. Because what it does is, is while expanding now, the, you know, things change, things turn over by, by going to R R and put a little bit more of a limitation, a light limitation on what they're able to do. So that, you know, some of the unsold lots or lots of arsehole, um, there's a lot more you can do in an agricultural zone than you can in a R R. So as they were attempting to establish a neighborhood district basically on the same arsehole, um, it allowed more protection for future owners that agriculture activity would occur right adjacent to that decision. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
So, and, you know, really, again, this was that S A S request that went down this path.
Okay.
Yep. All right. And then at the plan commissioner, we did have a unanimous, uh, vote to bring it before this board for a reason.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion and we have a second. Uh, I had a motion from Paul and a second from John before. If there's no further discussion, then call for a vote. All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is resolution number 2025-1. This is a resolution. Let's go first, let's have a motion, have the resolution read in full or by title only.
We're gonna make a motion that we read by title only.
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from John. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read resolution 2025-1 by title only.
Resolution number 2025-1, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, opposing Indiana Senate Bill One and other legislation impacting local government finances and public services.
Do I have a motion to pass and adopt resolution number 2025-1? And at this point.
Still moved.
We do have a motion from John. Do I have a second? Hearing no second.
So we discussed this, and, and you can just do nothing, and the motion would die, and the, the resolution would die.
We'll be better off tabling it again.
Or you can.
For one more month, until we get some final clarity. Is it, is it done by that point?
I just noticed in reading through it, you had made those couple of changes, but like, for example, in paragraph three, we really don't know, exceeding $2 billion. I don't, I don't think the numbers in this may be correct anymore. In paragraph 12, again, there's 7 million something. We don't know if those are correct, and same as in paragraph 13. We just, we don't know what those numbers are. They've not been proved yet.
I think you could also just move to withdraw the resolution. And then, if, if it dies, then there's a timeframe during which you wouldn't bring it back. But if you withdraw the resolution, then I think we could probably, if, if you felt the need to bring something back at a later date, we could do that.
So ideally, at this point, if we're not prepared to vote on this this evening, we would make a motion to withdraw. Withdraw it, and we craft something new as the numbers come in, if in fact it's a repeat, or do we need this ahead of time for?
Well, then, then it dies because it did not pass.
Well, right now, it'd die.
Yeah.
Without a second, it would die.
Yeah.
I just, I'm a little bit unclear on the implications of what that means as far as bringing another resolution, if you wanted to, in the next month or two.
It's changed and different, it should matter, shouldn't it?
Well, it's the same subject matter, but again, I'm, I'm not certain of the implications of that, which is why I suggested that you could just move to withdraw the resolution.
I think timing-wise, in another month or two, it would all be too late for any impact on this, on this, so.
I would agree with that.
With, with it dying here, it's probably the.
I know they were asking us, the AIM group, obviously, that was here last month presenting on this, they were asking us to get on board with this on there. And again, I mean, it's, it's changed, that's right.
It's changed. I do have an.
No numbers have changed since the ones that I sent out, in which we, in year 2026, will lose, I, I'm not sure that lose is the right word, but we will get $277,000 less in property taxes than we would as.
If we had a 4%.
As it is today. And then the following year would be an additional $546,000 that we would not get, and the following year would be 731,000. I sent out just a brief update to you all earlier in the week. House Bill 1402 additionally talks about our, the city having an ability to implement a lit rate, an income tax rate outside of what the county has. It also increases homestead deductions and phases out all business personal, personal property over time. And for reference, I do believe that we've received roughly $1 million in business personal property tax. So while the numbers are all very up in the air and very unclear, and while I definitely agree that all of our constituents could use a break, this will have an impact on our budget.
Well, I don't think it disagrees with that. But even some of those, those bills you just quoted, they're not even in this ordinance. Some of the bills aren't.
Right, you're correct, they're not.
So it's really not, the ordinance really isn't relevant to what's currently going on in the state legislature.
So at this, at this point in time, this, this resolution is done.
Resolution, whatever.
I would encourage each of you, as you continue to talk with your legislators, our legislators, another point that I, I just conceived of today, that I'm not certain on how this affects, for example, disabled veterans who currently are exempt, if they're fully, if they have 100% VA rating, they're currently exempt from property taxes. And some of them will, will have earned income still, able to work and earn an income. So that, that tax burden will then shift to them, who otherwise weren't paying taxes as a, you know, as a thank you for your service. Now, it's kind of a kick in the pants, perhaps.
Do you know if they're gonna raise the homestead yet? That's gonna even lower everything more.
Yeah.
What we're, what we're gonna deal with.
Which is gonna force us at that point to have to very seriously consider looking at an LIT to, to, as a, as a gap fill. So we're better off to reduce services.
I think it's important to note, too, that if we do, if we do implement an income tax, that there will be a period of time, or could be a period of time, too, where we have to bridge the gap possibly with our, with our existing funds, with our existing fund balances, because of lit tax, you will collect the year after that, you know, your employees pay it, and then we have to wait for it to come down from the state. So, you know, this has, has the ability to change how we do everything. And, and we will, I mean, we will definitely have some heartburn, I think, and the mayor and I talked about today, you know, we're very fortunate in our balances and what we have been able to do over the past, in the, in the past. And, and we have had conservative people on board that have allowed us to, to grow those balances. And it, it will be a change in how we do things, and, and we will have some, there will be some implications to how we operate. It's communities like Ferdinand, Huntingburg, smaller towns, that are really, really gonna feel, feel the, feel the strain. And, you know, they, while, you know, they're not necessarily our responsibility, they do make our community better as well. So, you know, we're kind of a big dog in the fight, and, you know, do we stand up for the little guys, too, even, even though it's not our fight, I'm not sure, but.
So if we wanted to open up John's motion again, to approve the resolution?
And, and I think it's important, too. I think, you know, I invite, you know, our legislators or whoever to come and sit with us, and I'm not saying that I'm opposed to property tax reform, but I would like to, I think we should have more say in it, because it is our budget, it is our money that, well, it's our constituents' money, but, you know, it's important that we have a say in, in making sure that we're able to fund our services and provide our constituents with, with the services that they have grown to expect.
With regard to this resolution, you know, not having a second, it would, it would just die here.
Yep.
Or someone else can make it, another motion. That could be seconded.
Well, I was just gonna say, with, with giving.
And the options would be to.
Well, Paul has suggested tabling it again.
Again, it's just a resolution, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But it is our, it would be us standing up with solidarity with other larger communities and small communities.
I think I'll get some clarity on this tomorrow. I do have a mayor's roundtable with AIM tomorrow, see where they stand on it.
Over the last five, six years, my property taxes has gone up about 7% a year. So I kind of welcome them slowing this down, stopping them a little bit. This is not a resolution, a resolution that I'm fond of.
If your personal ones went up 7% over the last five years, you're, you're lucky.
Because that's, that's it?
Because that's it.
And, and I will say, I feel like I've, I've said it a million times, but that has been state-driven to get your assessed value in line with your market value. It's not necessarily due to our tax rate or to what we, we have done.
Are you, are you saying 35%?
Yeah.
Or are you saying seven?
Per year, seven percent.
Seven per year?
Thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that's on the low side.
Yeah, well, that, that's true. I have heard higher.
But you probably bought your house well before I bought mine.
Yeah, and it depends on whether your, your tax caps, there's a lot of, a lot of issues with that. There's a lot of.
Deduction, tax caps.
I, I think, I think the folks in Indy, they, they, they know, they, they've received enough of these, by the way, from, from municipalities. They know it, it ain't perfect. And it's better than it was, for sure. I hope it gets better yet, but I think the point up there is, they know our constituents need relief. And, you know, it's an important discussion to have. This presents us an opportunity in these interesting times to do a gut check, you know, how much spending should we do? I don't feel that we've been unnecessarily extravagant. I, I, I'm not making that argument necessarily, but this will present us, if, if this just comes through the way it is, it's gonna present us an opportunity to say, well, what shall we be, what should we spend money on? You know, do we have to have more taxes to keep spending this at the same level? Or should we look at spending cuts? I don't know that I have the answer yet, so I don't know.
I don't think any of us do at this point.
And, and remember that from the city of Jasper standpoint, we have held the line and, and to cut the taxes of, of the city, you read taxpayers for the last four years running. Like this year, we had modest.
This year mildly went up.
Modest increase, a couple cents.
Again, due to assessed values.
Right.
But we, it's not like we're out here just frivolously spending lots and lots of money.
There's always opportunities, and that's, that was a discussion we had this morning with the department heads, you know, anticipating what we need to be doing for the future, and not knowing where this is gonna land. This is, this isn't gonna land until the end of the session. Probably, I think they're voting on it April 1st, but on SB 1, so the timeline for that is coming near.
But to your point, yes, SB 1 is not the only property tax.
No, it's not the only.
And it is, yeah, they, they will all matter.
And I think we have to look at it holistically, you know, what do we have? Where do we, where do we find that relief?
So we know we don't care for this bill, for parts of this bill, as it is, so we do not care enough to want to send a resolution showing our displeasure.
Well, I know there've been letters sent, or from myself and others, and I would, I would expect that you've probably sent letters as well, so.
Spoken personally.
That's right. We had the legislative session, and.
Daryl and Shane, and, yep.
So.
And they get it.
So do we want to withdraw?
I'm satisfied to let it.
Just die, die right here. Do I need a motion to have a withdrawal?
It's just done.
It's just done.
For lack of a second.
All right, with that, resolution 2025 has terminated its discussion. Ordinance number 2025-3. Do I have a motion to read this ordinance on the second and final reading in full or by title only?
Like a motion to read the motion by title only?
Can I have a motion from Paul?
I'll second.
Second from John.
Right, everybody.
All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With the city attorney, please read the ordinance 2025-3 by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-3, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of its taxable economic development revenue bonds and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second and final reading?
Still moved.
I have a motion from John.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. Further discussion?
I have a question. And in what was presented to us, in appendix A, these numbers are not filled out. Financial assistance, there's loan, and there's no dollar in there. And under B, there's no rate of percent, so.
So we are preparing all of that information, and we have the pre-closing call on March 26th, and in the interim, Baker Tilly is putting together the final numbers that we will use, and the final documents that will be used as attachments to all of these, for the, the closing of the bonds. So we don't.
So are we premature in passing this, if these numbers aren't filled out?
Well, I, so I think you have, we know it's the exact numbers with respect to the amount of the bond, 2,000,000.
360,000.
263.
2,236,000.
And I think today, I understand your question, but the bottom line is that the developer is paying for all of the funding, all of the expenses, and with the letter of credit is guaranteeing all of the payments. So, I mean, this is not uncommon. In fact, with any ordinance that we've ever passed with respect to a bond closing, we've never had the numbers at the time of the ordinance. It's always, those are numbers that are developed within the week of closing on the bonds. And we have to use the ordinance to have authorization to go forward with the closing.
Again, it just seems like turning the cart before the horse again, and, you know, I'm not in favor of that process.
I mean, I, I can't, I can't change the process.
The loan can, it, it can't exceed 2.36 million.
That's correct.
But shouldn't that be written in here somewhere? I mean, I don't see anywhere in this whole group of papers that we have that even mentions that amount of money. And now I have my own from a press release that went out from the Indiana Finance Authority that says that that was received.
Section 5.
Yeah. We see that in here, Chad?
In the ordinance, section 5.
Page 2, section 5.
Okay, I see that. Okay, okay. Not to exceed, I see that. All right, that's better, thank you.
And on there, it was asking for a rate?
And it is no greater than 2%.
Would that?
In that same section.
Say, I'm sorry, say again?
Base value with a premium.
Premium, no greater than 2%.
Yeah.
It's not a 2% loan, it's the, maybe I'm not gonna see 2% above.
Because the, the sheet that I got today from, I believe it was.
It's like 3.11.
3.11.
3.11.
Yeah. Can't pin that right down till it's.
By there. Yep.
And to provide a little bit of comfort, too, on the city's end, Renee hit on it, but this is fully backed and guaranteed by Kirsten's Development, Inc. And I, something a little bit different about this to provide even more assurance is that we have to also provide backing for the interest as well, not just the principal amount. So it's quite a large number to back, but it really did cover the city and the state on all angles, but, which I was, I had never seen that before, but it is what it is for the program. So that was very, I got, I seen some of that this afternoon at like 2:00, so.
And I know this was all agreed to before. I, I, I'm not disputing that, but it just seemed like where those numbers were, there's nothing there.
You're right. I mean, I, I've often thought to myself, we, we pass the ordinances, but with the attachment that says the financial documents, but the financial documents aren't attached because we won't have those until we close. We can't close until, without authorization to close, which is the ordinance. So it's, it's the process.
All right. And thanks for pointing that out, Chad, that that was in that section.
I know we've, we've been told a number of times, it was asked a couple different ways, this in no way becomes an obligation of the city.
Correct.
It's a definition of a unfair advantage. I, I'll take all those I can get.
All right, I have a motion from John and a second from Vince. Any other questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-4. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the first reading in full or by title only?
Like a motion to read by title only, please?
A motion for Paul to read by title only?
I'll second.
Second from Vince. All in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2025-4 by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-4, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, amending fees for activities of the Jasper Department of Parks and Recreation.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance on its first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. Further discussion?
Do you want Tom to explain?
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, counsel. So when we were working with Civic Plus, we encountered a situation where if we'll be able to do these things online in the future, so swim lessons, for example, we have different rates for in-city and out-of-city residents. If we were to do this through Civic Plus online in the future, we'd have to pay $1,500 a year to have GIS establish whether you truly are within the city limits or without the city limits, which is more than what we would make off of having that. So I have made the executive decision that we should change this and have one rate. So we have increased that rate and settled on a medium area. So that is the reasoning behind this.
Logical.
Any further questions on this?
Tom, I think this seems fair to me. I'm just, I'm curious, anecdotally, are you familiar with, if anyone ever had difficulty paying for swim lessons? Is there kind of an informal way of helping those people that you know has happened?
We have not run into that. We haven't been asked since I've been here. We would always look for a way to reconcile that, though.
Sure. Just curious. Thank you.
When you say swim lessons are $45 a session, I assume?
Yes.
And how long is a session?
It's the, what is it?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Ten days.
Does that need to be specified per session?
Yes, it's just as their offer.
I mean, that's what they sign up for.
Okay.
A session.
They're not signing up for two weeks, they're signing up for a session each time?
Correct.
Got it. Good.
So you could teach me the swim for $45.
I could.
I would not have guessed that, Phil.
I wouldn't either. All right. So any other questions on this?
He goes in the preschool swim lessons.
There are age limits, there are age differences.
All right, I have a motion from Nancy and a second from Vince. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say, you might as well. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-6. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the first reading in full or by title only?
Like a motion to read by title only, please?
I have a motion from Paul to read by title only.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. All in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance 2025-6 by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-6, an ordinance affixing salaries and wages for the elected officials and the civil city employees of the City of Jasper, Indiana for the year 2025, amending ordinance number 2024-19 and amending Jasper Municipal Code Section 1.15.020.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
Second from Phil. Further discussion? Tom?
We're fortunate enough to have someone who's approached us about doing golf lessons at the Wybie Schrader practice facility this summer. And we are trying to establish a way of doing this. So we have created a camp instructor. Simultaneously, we also had somebody else approaching us about wanting to do pickleball camp. And we decided we would make them both the same length in duration. And that session would be two weeks, but it would be three days each week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of one week, and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the second week. And we figured the best way of doing this is to have this, because we did not have it in the budget, to do this this way, that we would have, the camp be $70, and the participant, per participant, and the instructor would get 50 of that, the city would get 20. That instructor would be in charge of the organization of it and the equipment and everything else. We would allow them to get balls from the golf course. We would give those and reserve that time. It would be in the morning. If there are 40 participants, that's $2,000, we can work that in with our, within our budget, so. That's the way we came up.
So Tom, you've added that part about the youth golf and the youth pickleball because you have those other camps or whatever they're called up above in the ordinance that already exist.
Correct. We're very excited about the golf one, especially those younger kids are our future customers at the golf course, so this will be for middle school kids.
Any other discussion? Not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we bring these back next month for another reading?
Yep. Thank you, Tom. So is that all of them?
On that second one with the park department, is that a first reading only requires one reading?
No.
Okay, it should just say first reading. Okay.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is the TIFF management report. I think you were giving copies of that.
We'll go, thanks. I feel like it's really loud. No? Okay. And then I'll go to the RDC meeting in April. RDC reporting requirements, the TIFF management report, and then in June 15th. How do I get it? Oh, down, sorry. There we go. By June 15th, we have to do pass-through determination annually. By August 1st, we do TIFF neutralizations. The calculations have to be done before assessed values are certified to adjust base AV and TIFF areas. And then in December, a new requirement was that we have to complete and file an RDC spending plan, which I think I presented that to you all in December, and then it was approved by the RDC as well and uploaded to the GLGF website. And then, I'll just go through this report. The redevelopment commission members consist of Andy Sager, president, John Schrader, vice president, John Colley, secretary, Laura Grammer, member, Phil Mooney, member, and Steve Lukemeyer is the non-voting school board member. The city of Jasper has four current TIFF allocation areas, the central allocation area, the riverfront allocation area, the University Heights allocation area, and the new North Ridge Estates residential housing allocation area. You can see that TIFF Central was established in November of 2014 and is set to expire in February of 2049. The riverfront allocation area was established in November of 2015 and will expire in September of 2044. University Heights was established April 6, 2021, and will expire July of 2046. And the North Ridge was just established in September of 2024 and will expire February of 2045. The next slide shows the 2024 calendar year finances for each area. The central allocation TIFF area total revenue was $10,712,000, $712,988.94, $10.7 million. And our total expenditures in the TIFF Central were $4.4 million. You'll note that that includes the bond proceeds from the pool. That is not just revenue.
To date for that area?
Excuse me?
Is that to date for the area, like since it was established?
Just 2024.
No, that was just the 2024 revenue. Yeah, yeah. And then the riverfront area, the total revenue was $477,000, and the total expenditures were $458,000. The University Heights allocation area, total revenues were $2,236,000, and total expenditures were $1,078. Last year was the first year that we made a payment on the University Heights TIFF, on the conditional expenditure agreement. The categories that we spent TIFF money on, other services, professional services, we spent $357,000. And then $375,000 went to the RDC bond members, or to bond the RDC members. Capital outlay, $3.8 million. That includes what we paid Taber Owens from the bond proceeds in 2024. That's why that number is so high. And then debt service, principal on bonds, $291,000 and $355,000.
Kirsten, on professional services, you have an idea? I guess a lot of that includes the pool design, is that correct?
Yes. Pay for the pool design, we also pay Baker Tilly out of that.
On average?
We pay Baker Tilly also for, they help compile this report, they do the TIFF neutralization for us, the base assessed values, those sorts of things. Sorry, I interrupted you.
It's usually a lot less than this.
We allocate $100,000 in professional services. So anything, or 125, actually. So anything over that would be for the pool fees, and probably Barnes and Thornburg, we paid some for legal counsel. And then the finances continue on the next page. There's that $23,000 that we pay for the facade grant program out of TIFF Central. There was no TIFF distributed to other units, and our housing TIFF allocation area has no houses completed thus far.
Now, on that particular line with the other units, you mean other taxing units, such as the school corporation, wherever, the airport, whatever it might be?
Any of them.
What is the process then that those taxing units would come to us or the RDC to request funds?
Actually, they have recently, and it was Dr. Lori right before she left. So I do intend to reach out to Steve Lukemeyer and ask him if he wants to continue with that process. We asked them to give us just an explanation of the project that they're seeking funds for, and then that will go to the redevelopment commission for the session.
So they basically just have to prepare a project, and maybe there's parameters on the type of project it has to be also?
Can't be in a general fund, can't go to the school's general fund.
Has to be a project.
Capital project or, I want to say it was transportation that came in, but I think they took that out a couple of years back, didn't they not?
Or it could be like computers for students or things like that.
Capital, yeah.
Yeah. Wasn't that the security system?
So that June 15th, that date for the pass-through determination, so like this project, for example, it has a deadline of June 15th, and it doesn't make it by then, it's going to be next year? Is that what I'm interpreting or no?
No, I think they can bring the, they can bring the project to the redevelopment commission. We can't, they cannot receive more than 15% of the income in any given year. So, but I don't, that is a date.
I believe that is if, if we do not have, if we collect TIFF money and we do not have a project assigned to use that TIFF money for, then we have to pass through a certain amount of money, is my understanding. Or we have to pass it through back to the overlapping taxing units. But we have identified projects for the TIFF Central area that we are using the funds for. So that just basically says we have no excess AV that we're going to pass through.
So the June 15 thing?
That's the key.
We're reporting to overlapping taxing authorities. That's a statutory requirement, and our obligation is if we haven't already obligated those dollars, then we've got to pass through whatever that percentage is, 15%, for example.
Well, not if, they don't have to be obligated.
They don't have to be obligated.
They just have to be identified.
Okay, I'm going to wait until you're done.
No, go ahead.
We have, for every TIFF, we establish and pass an economic development plan. And that plan identifies projects that are available for use of that TIFF's funds. And so, and gives an estimated value of those projects. And so that is what we use to determine whether we have excess funds available or not.
Okay.
And based on those projects, we've never had excess funds available. But in the meanwhile, the school can come to the redevelopment commission and say, we would like for you to partner with us on this specific project. And the redevelopment can, the redevelopment commission can approve a project like that regardless of the timeline.
I believe those are two separate situations.
So could we see that plan?
Sure.
I would like to see that, to see how these dollars were, could potentially be allocated. And in that regard, because you don't know if any taxing units are going to come before the RDC to request no more than 15%, is it wise to hold back project 15% that you don't spend of proposed projects in case they would come and ask for 15%?
So, I mean, right now, again, with the riverfront and the University Heights, and now the central area, those funds are committed to repayment of the bonds and the conditional expenditure agreements. So you're not talking about 15% of the income, it would be 15% of what we can keep of the income. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, I mean.
15% of what's on hand, available.
Of what's available.
Non-allocated, non-committed.
Right.
Of the fund balance, basically, outside of what we're paying.
But when they follow those other taxing entities, for the school, for example, they could ask for whatever they want to ask for, and then the RDC decides whether.
How much to give.
Yeah, the gift will be made.
Yeah.
Grant or whatever you want to call it, distribution.
Right now, the way our commitments are with all the funds, we really don't have anything to give currently either.
Well, we have quite, I mean, we have a balance in the central area.
Yeah, we do have to have a reserve, too. We're required to have a reserve. So you have to watch out for that, too. And if the tax rates go down, we won't be getting as much TIFF either, so.
Right. That's correct.
Terrible. We're not, you know, it's, the payments are made, you know, like the central, or the riverfront, for example. I mean, we're just holding back enough to pay for the annual fees, really, at university, until he gets his. At university until he gets his infrastructure paid back. There's nothing available there.
Right. I was thinking about earlier, I want to say, don't quote me exactly, but I think the infrastructure on that project was like 651,000.
It was just over 600, yeah.
Yeah.
And really, last year was the first year.
That's right.
Yes.
And we got a thousand seventy-eight dollars that went out the door of 650,000.
Out of $2,000 collected.
It'll be fully assessed pretty well next year.
Yeah.
Okay. And here are the fund balances that John was just mentioning. You will see that we do have one point, as of January, I'm sorry, December 31st, we had 1.4 million dollars in the TIF River Cent, sorry, River Central, in the central area TIF. And that is, you know, money that we will use this year to make payments and on the pool bonds and then obviously pay Baker Tilly their services. And there will be a request, I'm sure, for the regional wellness center. And then the riverfront allocation area, there's 67,000, a balance of 67,000 in there. The TIF University Heights, there's a balance of 1,157. And then you move to the bond funds. The Jasper Riverfront Allocation Area Bond Fund has a zero balance. The principal, the 2019 principal and interest account has 131,000. The riverfront allocation area principal and interest for the 2019 A2 bonds has 93,000. The 2019 C bonds, zero. The riverfront reserve account has 131,000. The 2019 A2 reserve account has 17,000. The riverfront operation TIF admin fund has 7,000. And then the central allocation area, these are the pool bond funds. And these funds, the last ones after the first four, these are all held with the trustees, so we don't have those in hand. So the 2024 lease rental sinking, sinking fund on the pool, 213,000. The lease rental operation fund has 6,000. The 2024 lease rental construction fund has 6 million. And that's what we're using to pay out Taber Owens as we get bills for the pool. And then the 2024 lease rental cost of issuance fund now has 0 in it. And then the next slide shows our debt payments made in 2024. And the riverfront TIF, we have a total principal and interest outstanding of 5.2 million. In 2024, we paid 261,000 on principal and interest. And that was the 2019 A1 bond. And then on the A2 bond, we have an outstanding principal of 127,000. And in 2024, we paid, we made a debt payment principal and interest of 195,000. And that bond is scheduled to be paid off this year, as you'll note. And then once that's paid off, it's a waterfall bond, so it will move down to then begin paying off the 2019 C bonds, which is the next line. There's 1.5 million in principal and interest outstanding. We haven't made a payment in 2024 on that. Again, that's what will come once the 2019 A2 bonds are paid off. Out of TIF Central, the lease rental revenue bonds, that's the pool project. Principal and interest outstanding is 11.8 million. We paid one payment in 2024 of 188,000. Maturity on that bond is 2037. And then on the University Heights Conditional Expenditure Agreement, total outstanding principal and interest is 645,000. We made a 1,000 payment in 2024. And that is set to be paid off by 2033, if not sooner. And then Northridge Estates, the 2025 Conditional Expenditure Project Agreement on that, we have total principal and interest outstanding 1.1 million. And we have yet to make a payment on that. And that again will mature in 2031, if not sooner.
Kirsten, those 2019 bonds, that's the cultural center, is that right?
That's the riverfront. The cultural center is not paid for with TIF funds.
Okay.
So that is the river center.
Cultural centers.
And I'm thinking, right, as a Northridge, we won't pay that until they start getting.
It'll be two or three years.
Make a payment until those houses up in streets in place.
Any more questions?
Thank you for the report, Kirsten.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any action needed to take.
Nope, I just need to acknowledge.
Report to the council. You have, do you want to cover the next items, the donations?
I was just asking for council acceptance for the donations made to the art department in the month of February. There was a total of 475 dollars in donations just to be used by the art department. And then there was a total of 3,000 in restricted use donations from the Du Bois County Community Foundation to be used for special workshops. The art department has agreed to the restrictions on those funds and we are just asking that we accept those donations totaling 3,475.
Make a motion to accept the donations as presented.
I have a motion from Paul.
Second.
Second from John. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Regional Wellness Center update. Is there anything that, we haven't had much change other than the timeline maybe since the last meeting? And there is a lot of, again, lots up in the air. But I think from a design standpoint, through the build, operate, and transfer process, we've come up with a pretty good design to move forward with. We don't have a guaranteed maximum price at this point. Just that, at this point, it's based off of numbers that we've used for months and months and months not to exceed this, this level. So we really don't know what it's going to be at this point. Still moving forward with a lot of the detailed planning.
We do have a firm number for the phase one.
For phase one, we do, which is the site preparation.
It hasn't been bid yet, but the contractor feels pretty confident in their estimate and, and the contingency that they have.
And what does phase one include and how much is the estimate on that?
It's a site preparation.
Is site prep and utility installation and stormwater work. And that total is 3.34 billion dollars.
And that amount, it would be part of the guaranteed price included in that?
It's included. Meetings have continued, fundraising continues. I know we just made a comment to a couple of people this morning. Received some contributions yesterday. Contributions that will have an impact on lowering the bond amount because they're, they're not over five years. They are immediate contributions, which is what we're needing, you know, in order to reduce the bond amount. So those are, those are being welcomed. We're having a lot of meetings in the future with not just some of the donors that we've been trying to reach out with and haven't talked to, but also repeat, going back to those donors from the initial to see if there's some opportunities there to ante again second round. So momentum has been good. Focus has been on the design and trying to work through with the engineering, make sure that we've got what we need. And then I think it's a matter of timing to come up with, as Kirsten's been doing in her analysis. And Baker Tilly, we rely heavily on our consultants from Baker Tilly and from Barnes and Thornburg to keep us legally straight in this. But make sure that we can fund what we said we were going to do. And it still is our goal not to have any impact on property tax. So I feel still, I still feel confident that we will reach and attain the goal for fundraising. My feeling is that the initial 15 million will be attained soon. And then we will continue, I think, with a larger target that will cover some additional costs. We have talked about, from a budget standpoint and operations, that first three years are always going to be a ramp up in business. You know, you're not going to have all of your members day one. You're not going to have the fees throughout the year. So that first year is probably going to be a little bit of a loss, second year possibly. Until the third year is, I think, is when the projection is that we would end up being a break even in operations. The, to overcome that, there is a fund that we intend to set up as an operations reserve fund. And then there will be a property maintenance fund on our side. The operations reserve would be in the YMCA and the property maintenance fund would come in the city side. So that is part of our fundraising as well. We are trying to ante an some money in that so we don't fall short and have the time to ramp up. We realize that's a, that's a big, big thing. So other than that, there's just a lot of details to work out. We're still at a very, very, I think, exciting phase of the project. We were able to see, when was that, Kirsten?
Last week.
Was it last Friday, Thursday, Thursday? Last Thursday, we were able to see, actually a walk through the facility. They did the virtual walkthrough. And that, that gets you pretty excited. It's not quite ready for public, but when it is, I think you're going to see a lot of, lot of anxiousness out in the public to see this thing happening. So that, that's kind of my, my update at this point. Lots of questions yet and I encourage you, if you have questions and need answers on those, come talk to me. You know, I'll, I'll find out what the answers are for you. If I don't have them now, I'll get them for you.
And I had given the council members and yourself a note that a resident had given to me all those questions. I would like to have some answers to some of those questions when you get time.
Many of them we have answered in the past in our discussions, but I will, I will address those with each of you. Because, yeah, it was under my door this morning. I didn't have time to really do any.
Maybe a nice comprehensive Q and A packing.
Need that. We need that, Chad.
Historical Q and A.
I believe that's the case too. I think we've got to come up with some things for the public to, to help share. I, I think that's a great idea. And I know, you know, President Protim has passed on many of the concerns as well that individuals have had and it passed to him. So again, appreciate that. You know, I don't want to wait until there's a volume to, to respond to. Let's do them as they come. I appreciate having the dialogue right up front. Okay. I, council has been great. I think the questions that you have posed have made us a better place today. And I just encourage that. It'll make us in a better place in the future. So don't want to, don't want to throw cold water on any, anything. I think the discussion is healthy and I think it's good for us. So long-term good for the citizens. If there's anything specific or you want to add anything, Tom or anybody. I'm, if, if not, I'm going to steer just for a second to the outdoor pool, the aquatic center. And if you get a chance, get down there and look at it. It's exciting right now. You see the, the concrete pads are being poured over there around the pool area. You know, the, the slides are up. And I was, had the ability to be there yesterday on the construction site. We actually did some filming there yesterday. So what, what a great facility that's going to be. And people are constantly stopping me and saying they can't wait. I think, Tom, your challenge is what are we going to do with capacity when it comes to opening day? Anything else?
Is there a way to, like, you know, make, excuse me, for a safety standpoint, like a lunch hour when they're not working, just to go in it, take a look at it?
They better be working over lunch hour. Okay. They, we are on a tight timeline. Yeah, we are on a tight timeline right now. We have to be filling, we have to have water filled in there May 1st. So you think about where we are and where we've got to be. They have got to be working whenever the weather's right and whether it's weekends or whatever. Somebody better be.
Different type of noise coming from there, so I know they're doing something different than they were. So I think they're working more of the baking part.
Yeah, they were shooting concrete yesterday. But it's exciting. And of course, that, that just is going to build that campus even more so. That, this area with the parklands and so. I encourage you, just, you know, they will, they will know you're there. If you tell them you're a council member and you want to see the site, you want to see what's going on, they will show you the safe pathway to take. Okay? Okay. If there's nothing else, then I would entertain.
I just have one more thing.
Okay.
Beginning July 1st, we have to start live streaming and archiving our meetings. Lisa and I have talked briefly. The recommendation has been made to me to practice, practice, practice. So I'm hoping by the April meeting that we might try to start the process. So just a heads up. For some practice.
I have something just for everyone's edification very quickly. I was hoping he would be here tonight. I didn't see him. There's somebody that was, this is going back, in, in the interest of Hoosier hysteria, going back to March of 1977 in the Herald, saying the praises of a, of a young man at that point in time. Said the 5'10" senior had received all sectional and all regional honors. He was described as a deadly outside shooter. Finished the year with 317 points this year, averaged 12.7 points per game. Top game was 28 points against Orleans in the Washington Regional. In that game, he hit 10 of 17 from the field, mostly from long range, they say, and eight of nine free throws. He wasn't here tonight, but when you see Kevin Manley, tell him we were reminiscing about his basketball success.
It wouldn't have been 77.
Seventy-two, seventy-two.
Yeah, I was going to say, not 77. I was trying to figure out who it was in 77.
I can start over.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin was quite a basketball player.
Because we didn't, we didn't even make it to the regional in 77.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from John.
My second.
Second from Chad, all in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.